Welcome everyone to the Fort Mill Town Council Tuesday, April 14th, 2020 meeting. Of course, as we continue to find new and challenging ways to do the town's business amidst the pandemic, this will be our second council call so that we can meet and everyone via phone and continue the business as it should. For the sake of all those that may be tuning in or joining our call, I would like to do a roll call. I am Gwen Savage, the mayor. We have Jamie Shirey, correct?
Yes.
And Ronnie Helm, correct?
Yes, yes.
Larry Huntley.
Here.
Chris Moody.
Good evening.
And Lisa Cook. And Trudy, did you just join us?
I did just join, yes.
Wonderful. So we have a full complement of the town council. We also have Davie, would you introduce the people from the town administrative staff that are joining us today?
Yes, we have myself, Davie Broom, we have Chris Pettit, Assistant Town Manager, our Planning Director, Penelope Kehren. And Virginia Burgess, I'm sorry, our Town Clerk.
I never forget Virginia. All right. So we will, we will call this meeting to order. Would everyone like to join in the Pledge of Allegiance? Even though we don't have a flag, I have one at my desk. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, to the citizens, one nation, under God. Under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Larry, would you like to pray for us?
Okay, I'll do that. Dear Lord, dear Lord, as we enter into this council meeting, we pray that you would be with our nation as we're going through this silent war. We pray that it would soon be over and we can return to our normal life, but we give thanks for the blessings that we have received. We pray these things in our holy name, amen.
Amen. Thank you so, thank you so much, Larry, and I'm sure we all wish for the same thing. Council members, because of the phone conferencing, as we vote, you will have to say your name and say either yea or nay so that we can get an accurate counting. And each time we need to, I'll need to try my best to help Virginia understand what the county is so that we can do all the appropriate documentation. So with that, council, you have received the minutes for the March 2nd, the March 13th, and the March 23rd schedule and special call meetings and a council workshop. Does anyone have any deletions, additions, or changes that need to be made? Hearing none. Jamie, how do you vote?
I vote to accept.
So I need a motion first, I'm sorry. Okay, so Trudy's gonna make the motion. And Jamie's gonna second. Okay, Jamie, you'll second. Jamie, you vote?
I accept.
Accept. Ronnie, how do you vote?
Accept the minutes as read.
Hey Larry?
I accept the minutes.
Trudy?
I accept the minutes as presented.
Chris Moody?
I accept.
Lisa Cook?
I accept.
And I, Gwen Savage, accept. So it is unanimous vote to accept the council's minute, meeting minutes and special call meeting and council workshop minutes. The public comment period of our meeting because of the regulations to stay at home and do special distancing between each other is going to be changed slightly until we have some relief on this. So we have asked our public to submit in writing to the Town Clerk via the address of 200 Tom Hall Street, Fort Mill, South Carolina 29715, or at the email address V as in Virginia, Burgess, B U R V E S S, at fortmillsc.gov. We will go over any that have been received towards the end of this particular meeting. So for this meeting, we have no presentation. We do have one old business item, number one, which is a second reading and unfortunately a public hearing. An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, Chapter Two Administration, Article Four Finance and Taxation, Division Four Development Impact Fees, so as to update the development impact fees for the town as mandated by the South Carolina Development Impact Fee Act. Chris Pettit is our resource, our professional resource on this item. I need a motion.
I make a motion to defer Old Business Item Number One until our June meeting.
All righty. Ronnie has a second. So we have Jamie that's made a motion to defer Old Business Item Number One until our June meeting, and we have a second by Council Member Ronnie Helm. Larry, how do you vote?
I vote in favor.
Okay, Ronnie, you second it, I assume, or you say you're accepting?
In favor, yes.
Vote in favor. Okay, Jamie?
I'm in favor.
Trudy?
In favor.
Chris Moody?
I'm in favor of the motion.
Lisa?
I'm in favor also.
And I am in favor. So that's a unanimous decision to defer this item. I would like to state for anyone else listening that the deferment is in relation to working to find a way to do public hearings without violating the ordinances that are in front of us today about social distancing. So we are deferring this to ensure that we hear from our public and that we do it in a safe way. Old Business Item Number Two, Second Reading and Public Hearing, An Ordinance Adopting the Town of Fort Mill Capital Improvements Plan for Fiscal Year 2019, 2020 through Fiscal Year 2023 and 2024. Chris Pettit is our expert on this. Do I have a motion?
Jamie, to defer Old Business Item Number Two until the June meeting also.
Okay, do you have a second? Ronnie's second, okay. Thank you, Ronnie Helm is seconding that motion. This is for the same reason, because we need to have a public hearing and work that out. Jamie, how do you vote?
To defer.
Okay, Ronnie?
To defer.
Larry?
To defer.
Trudy?
To defer.
Chris Moody?
To defer.
Lisa Cook?
To defer.
And I also vote to defer, so that's unanimous. New Business Items. New Business Item Number One, A Resolution Accepting Portion of Broadcloth Street and Kingsley Development Into the Town of Fort Mill Street Maintenance System. This is in Ward Two, and Penelope is our professional resource on this item. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept.
Okay, Jamie, you'll make the motion. Trudy, are you seconding?
Yes, I'll second the motion.
Okay, are there any questions for Penelope on this item before we actually take a vote?
Everything is...
Ronnie, I hear your voice.
Yeah, everything's up to standard on the roads and so forth.
Yes, yes, sir, it is. Everything has been inspected by the utilities and also Public Works, and it is eligible to be accepted.
Okay. Penelope, when we accept a road like this one, are there sidewalks related to that road?
For this development, Kingsley, the developer, Clear Springs, is responsible for the sidewalk and also any decorative pavers. We have a maintenance agreement with them. We also have, every time we have like a street resolution, we do a maintenance agreement, a maintenance, excuse me, liability period. It's typically 12 months, but they, Clear Springs has agreed, we had recommended and they have agreed, to extend the maintenance liability for 24 months instead of the standard period of 12 months.
That's wonderful. That's wonderful. That's, that's an excellent extension, and hopefully we'll get to drive on those roads at some point in the future. Again.
Does this include parking lots?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Does this include any parking lots or just the actual roads?
It includes the actual road with curbing.
But not, not, not parking, right, Penelope?
Let me double check with that. Hold on for a second.
Mayor, this is Chris. It includes some of the on-street parking in the Broadcloth Street right away? But not the other parking lots associated with Kingsley, just the on-street parking?
Okay, did everybody hear that? It does include the on-street parking. That is an extension of the road itself.
Okay, I heard that.
And it's all on Broadcloth, so basically you're from the textile way, when you turn on Broadcloth, all the way to the hotel, so those parking spaces, and then on the opposite side to the Kingsley Parkway.
Okay. Lisa, does that satisfy your question?
Yes, it answers that question. My understanding from our council notes is that there is still construction ongoing though, even though we are past the threshold that was in the development agreement. Is that correct? And what constructions are still to be done and what area?
In regards to...
I remember reading something about that construction also.
Mayor, this is Chris. There is, there is limited construction still going on. There's, there's one remaining building, Kingsley Nine. It's adjacent to the Panera Bread Building with the swim facility. So because that one more building is under construction, that's why staff recommended extended warranty period, and that's why Clear Springs agreed to the extended warranty period.
Again, it's quite what they typically do. Okay?
It looks, it looks like diverting a lot of the construction traffic also to the back side of that development to keep the big trucks off of Broadcloth.
Yeah, I've seen a lot of them out on 21 because I've been using 21 before all this other stuff started, and there were a lot of trucks coming out that way.
Penelope, Chris, do you, are you aware of any effort on their part to direct larger construction trucks through the back of the development?
I am not aware of that.
Mayor, I think, I think they most often utilize the parking lot area off of Broadcloth for a lot of their larger vehicles, just because Broadcloth staying open, it's good for those other businesses there, so they want to minimize the impact of construction on those other businesses. So I would think that for the most part, the construction traffic would utilize that back parking lot versus being on cloth that often.
And do we have a next, a completion date for the construction? So I know they're extending this 24 months or giving an additional 12 months, but will they still be under construction during that time?
As Chris stated, you know, we have the building nine under review, so you know, we hope to have that done before the 24 months expires.
And are there any addition, additional buildings along this roadway we're trying to approve after those 24 months or?
Not that I'm aware of. I'm only aware of the Kingsley Building Nine that fronts on the Broadcloth.
This, this is Chris again. That would be Kingsley Nine, the building we've been talking about, would be the last building to go under construction on Broadcloth Street as it is today.
Okay, so there is no additional space for anything else?
No additional building.
Okay. Any further questions in regards to this particular item? Hearing none. We have a motion on the table to approve and a second. Jamie, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Got a yes from Jamie. Ronnie?
Yes.
Larry?
In favor.
Trudy?
In favor of.
Chris?
I vote yes.
Lisa?
Vote to approve.
And I also vote to approve. Certainly if there are changes in what we have accepted, I would like to think that we would bring it back to the table and take another look at how to move forward. So thank you all for your questions and the hard work, Penelope and Chris, on following this to completion. Information discussion. We will have our Town Manager Davie Broom talk to us a little bit as an update from our staff regarding the town's COVID-19 response. Davie?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to kind of give an update or reiterate how the town is operating due to this COVID-19 response. All town departments are operating on modified work schedules. Again, we're doing this in response to COVID-19 and following South Carolina DHEC and CDC guidelines for social distancing. I would like to kind of, I would like to break this down into locations or departments since how we are operating currently. Tom Hall is closed to the public, but we're utilizing two drive-through lanes for utility payments, municipal court payments, building permits, and business license. We're also offering plan reviews through our planning and zoning department. We ask that anyone could go and access our website at www.fortmillsc.gov to follow that process. Our police, Police Department is again operating on the modified schedules. The department and building is closed to the public. However, we do have, the public has access to a phone located at entrance off of Confederate Street for any, any issues they want to address at the Police Department. The Municipal Court has been suspended until a later date, and we just want to remind everyone that for emergency situations, they should always dial 911. Should they have non-emergency situations and want to speak with the Police Department, they can contact them at 803-547-2022. Our Fire Department, the building is closed to the public, however, they are operating on normal schedule. As far as normal operations, they're modified schedules. Again, want to remind everyone for emergency situations to call 911. Non-emergency situations for the Fire Department, you can reach them at 843-547-5511. They did want to, we want to share with everyone along the lines of the Fire Department, there is a statewide burn ban for South Carolina at this time, so no outdoor burnings at this time. The Utilities Department, the office itself is closed to the public, and this is our Water Sewer Maintenance Department. They are still operating on a modified schedule but continuing to provide services along for water and sewer services. Just wanted to make everyone aware that the town is currently suspending all non-paid disconnects of utility services. So we do ask that, that our customers pay their bills accordingly to the date on the bill, but the town will not be issuing non-paid disconnects for the month of April. Our Public Works Department, their building is open to public, they, we are continuing to operate services there, and make everyone aware that all sanitation services are operating on normal schedule. For our Parks and Recreation, all of our town parks and facilities are open to the public. All of our sports programming has been suspended until April 30th. The Parks and Recreation Department will be reevaluating that timeframe around the end of this month and updates shortly around the end of this time. All programs are suspended until through April 30th. And Mayor, that's all the updates I have on the departments at this time.
I think it's important to note, excuse me, who am I talking over? I don't mean to.
No, this is Jamie. I just wanted to ask, we still have refuse pickup and the county is still doing recycling pickup.
Yes, sir, we are still collecting sanitation garbage and recycling at this time. The recycling is being transported to York County Recycling Center. They have suspended their material recovery facility, so the, any recyclables collected is going to a landfill. But that is, you know, that is the York County's recycling policy at this time in their response to COVID-19. Our customers, our residents can determine, decide if they want to place their recycle cart at the curb for collection or not, but if they do, it will be collected on its normal schedule.
And I've had a couple of ask that question, if they still need to put it out or not, so thank you.
Yes, sir.
Jamie, if we... Go ahead, Larry.
Okay. If we have any employees on reduced work schedule, are they still paid the full pay?
Yes, sir, at this time, we are still, they're still being paid for a 40-hour work week and they are working on an every-other-day basis.
Good, good, that's good.
Yes, many of our employees are working from home, but anyone's that have the capability are working 40 hours away from home.
Thank you.
That was a question I was gonna ask, Larry. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to, in the event that others are listening, reiterate a couple of things that I have gotten calls on in regards to COVID-19. We could not, as a municipality, institute a stay-at-home policy. That is a state mandate. It is not available for municipalities. I am aware that a couple of municipalities in our state did it, but they were not legally in the position to do so. I'm very happy that our, our state has gone that additional step. I think we were doing most of it. However, there were instances where people were continuing to group and exceed the number of people per grouping, and unfortunately, that causes the rest of us to have to be, in a position to have to stay at home. The stay-at-home is to try to protect everyone. It is not to punish people to have them stay inside their homes. So first and foremost, it is for protection. Second, we as a municipality did not have the jurisdictional or legal authority to do so. I understand everyone that sent notes and asked for this. We passed that along to the state who had direction and control at that point in time. We also cannot do certain other activities because this is a federally declared national emergency. So emergency response in our country works in a pyramid of sorts. If we're down on, let's just say if there was a train derailment or a large accident inside town, then we would manage that. If it required additional resources, the county can take, by mandate, they can take charge of that event. Then it moves, the larger the event, to the state. And in this case, with COVID-19, this is a national and a global event. This is not, you know, just a Fort Mill event. It's everywhere. So we're doing everything within our power to ensure that our community, our employees, and that we're all safe, doing the social distancing, working from home when possible, only going out for necessary travel, and keeping the services available to our community as readily as possible. I would like to thank everyone on staff for the response to the storm that moved through as they helped remove debris and ensure that we had safe passage when we were in need of traveling somewhere. So I just wanted to clear that up. We also are following all of the required DHEC and CDC guidelines in which we do reporting, and that information is gathered as is required and disseminated from those government agencies. So thank you all on our staff for doing all of the conference calls and the work necessary to ensure that our community is following the guidelines and reporting as is necessary to those entities that are indeed in charge. We now can move to the information discussion item number two. Who will provide for us any public comments that have been submitted?
Mayor, I will do that, Davie.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, we have one total comment today.
Hold tight, okay, now I can hear.
Okay. We have one comment we received today from Mr. Al Rogat. He resides at 1006 Crest Haven Lane, Fort Mill, South Carolina. His comment was, please have video conference meetings in the future.
I do believe for Mr. Rogat, if he is on the call, that we are working towards that. I think there have been many opportunities to use a system called Zoom that did not pan out for many municipalities because it was hijacked, and we want to use the safest methodology possible, and we will pursue that, and hopefully by our next meeting, we can do video conferencing. I would like to think, however, that we are very open and have been since the beginning of this event in making sure that we're providing all information available to our community on our website, on our Facebook page. We have put out news releases and information pieces more than we have in the past, and we're holding our meetings without hesitation. So I look forward to seeing some movement to get us to a video conference because I'm certain Mr. Al misses us. Is that the only comment that we have or question for today?
Yes, ma'am, that's the only comment we received.
Okay. We have no executive session items on our meeting minutes this evening, so we'll quickly go round. Larry, do you have anything for the good of the whole?
For good of me, I'd be glad when there's... Uh, for good of me, uh, I'd be glad when this thing is over. Eating cornflakes three times a day is getting old.
I understand. I, I miss our local restaurants. I do takeout. Okay, thank you, Larry. Jamie?
Uh, just say I wanted to be, um, we are coming to other places. I'm, we are coming to them.
Okay, Lisa?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, um, for town manager, I know we've received some information from the Municipal Association through our emails regarding pandemic and how other citizens are moving forward. Um, when do you think we'll have an update to our budget and how this pandemic and all of these changes are going to affect our budget for 2020? Because we know there's probably some anticipated changes that will need to take place during the year.
Yes, ma'am. We, uh, we will be starting our budget process, uh, in the next, well, in, in the next couple of weeks. Um, that puts us, our, our, um, fiscal budget year is October one, run through September thirtieth. So, uh, we will be beginning our, uh, budget process here soon. Um, and, uh, we can provide council updates as we move through that process as to, uh, how the COVID-nineteen crisis, uh, if this had any effect on our, on our town and on our budgets, um, at that time. Right now, we do not...
I'm looking more for the current budget cycle that we're in. Yeah, typically we would get updates from Chantay as to where we're proceeding on a month-to-month basis with the budget. Um, and we, you know, have to anticipate some significant changes to the way we're going to end this current fiscal year.
We can provide an update for, um, that update for our, um, second meeting in April. Um, that would be our seven AM meeting.
Okay, seven-thirty. And Lisa?
Seven-thirty AM meeting.
Yeah, and Lisa and council members, in some of the discussions on the conference calls I sit in on, one of the things that we will notice will be outside of our control naturally, but fewer people are driving. Therefore, there's much less gas tax being collected. And that will have an impact on the amount of money that we get in our funds, uh, from the state on road systems. So as we continue, a- as you all know, uh, this is not a sprint. This is a marathon. And the economic impacts of this event, um, certainly aren't going to reveal themselves to us very rapidly. Um, I too would like to know where we stand, um, on hearing what monies are being collected, but nothing is open. So I think that's probably going to have a correlative impact. But, um, Davey, if you would pull together something along those lines, um, that would be great.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Uh, Lisa, did you have any further comments?
No, that's all for everybody. Please stay safe.
Thank you. Ronnie?
Uh, just a question on the park. Where we stand on it?
Are you talking about improvements to the park, Ronnie?
Correct, correct.
Yes, sir. Um, we have a public bid opening scheduled for this Thursday. I believe it is at two PM. Um, and we will be, that's when we will be accepting and opening bids, um, for the upgrades to Walter Elijah Park.
Okay. Thank you.
And I applaud staff for the way they've handled, um, the progress on this particular item. Uh, I have seen them, uh, meet at six feet apart in the parking lot, uh, with interested parties to do work for us. And, uh, we're adhering to all of the protocol that's given to us, but yet continuing to make progress. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And Mayor, I'd like to say also the, the bid opening will be, it will be by video conference. So it will be something new for us.
Great.
But it will be by video conference Thursday.
Okay. That is not an open to the public video conference, correct?
Uh, yes, ma'am, it is and it will be, uh, publicized.
Okay, great. As long as, uh, anyone that may be listening knows how to obtain that information, I'm sure it'll be on our website and we'll put it out in the news release for them.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, let's see. Uh, in relation to Ronnie's, uh, comment about the park, I think it's important to note, because I've also gotten emails about closure of the park. We certainly recognize the need, particularly in this time, for everyone to have the opportunity to get outside and not be cramped up in a home. Uh, you can still walk the sidewalks, uh, all the way to the Peach Stand and further and into town down to Sprat Street. Um, there has been no restriction on walk, walking, the walking path around Walter Elijah. We just must adhere to the, uh, state guidance for the number of people in a group. So, uh, just know that there's still a lot of outdoors available too. Um, Chris Moody?
I'm good. You all stay safe.
Thank you. Trudy?
Um, I was going to ask about the, uh, burn ban that, um, was it Davey that was talking about the burn ban earlier?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, but now you can still have the fire pits and different things like that going on in your backyard?
It seems off the, uh, the burn ban, um, restricts all burnings except, um, grilling, whether it's by charcoal or, uh, natural gas or anything. But all other burnings, uh, fall under this burn ban.
And Trudy, I know, I know that you're asking because I read something as well that indicated you could still make smores at a fire pit. I wondered about that when I read.
Oh, okay. Well, no, that's not, that's not the reason I was asking, but that's fine. I was just trying to clarify.
Alrighty. Um, with that, I still, um, I don't think I've had a single council meeting that I didn't feel the need to thank all of my council members for continuing to remain diligent in the town business, even in the circumstances that we're in. No one could possibly have ever dreamed we would be in this place. And I'd like to thank all of our staff members that are willing to continue, um, to go into our community and do the work that we all need to have done. So please, uh, respect the safe distancing. Please, if you go for the essentials, use the protocol that's been provided through us. I think a lot of the information can be very confusing, but, um, I don't think, um, this council and this town has done anything that wasn't as proactive as we possibly could be. And I think that's good for, for the whole. Um, it's better to be prudent than sorry. So please take those precautions, stay safe, and we miss everyone. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Do I have a second?
One second.
I've got a motion and a second. Thank you. Uh, Larry, how do you vote to adjourn?
I vote in favor of adjournment.
And Jamie?
In favor of.
Lisa?
I approve.
Uh, Ronnie?
In favor.
Chris Moody?
I vote in favor.
Trudy?
In favor of.
All right, and I am in favor of as well. I hope you all have a blessed evening and thank you so much for joining us.